So, good evening and welcome to the Select Board meeting of November 8th, 2017. It's a joint meeting with the Amherst Housing Authority to appoint a new member to replace someone who has resigned their position. It is currently 5:38 for our starting time here. A few things to start with, I'll outline the process we're going to follow, just so everybody's aware of what we're going to do.
Do we call our meeting to order? Do we call our meeting to order? You probably, since you posted it. So, I would call the meeting of the Amherst Housing Authority to order at 5:38.
There you go. Okay. So, there's a few process things. We've fortunately or unfortunately done this a couple of times in the last year, so we're a little more familiar. But nonetheless, the way in which we go about this is, there's a whole process we go through as far as, you know, knowing about a vacancy, making notice publicly of that, asking for letters of interest, which you folks have supplied to us. We were hoping to have a meeting earlier, we couldn't do that, so now we're having it tonight. The other thing I will mention at this point before getting into the actual nitty-gritty of sort of how the order of events is going to happen is the following. Ms. Kruger has the distinct pleasure, I guess, of serving on both the Select Board and the Housing Authority. We checked with legal counsel, she actually does get two votes tonight. And so, the majority will be out of, will be out of nine, so, and she gets to count twice. So she could vote two the same, two different, whichever she chooses to do, but she does get two votes, and majority will be the deciding factor. And I'll get into that in a minute. So first, we'll start out, and we'll do introductions in a moment, but I'll talk about process for a second. This is filling a resignation. You will have the position until the election in March. You're certainly eligible to run for election at that point. You will be not, if you do choose to run, you will not be listed as an incumbent on the ballot. You don't get the privilege of being an incumbent in that way. The election that happens in March will fill the position for the remainder of the term, so that will go until, Mr. Jessup, I believe, was who had resigned his seat. His position on the AHA runs until March of 2019. So you get the pleasure of running, and then running again a year later. So that's the nitty-gritty of that particular process of how long you'll hold this particular, and then if you run for a election, how long you will hold that one before the reelection cycle starts. So we'll start, we'll have each of you give an opening statement of two minutes each. I will keep time not super strictly, there's not a big warning bell that's going to go off. I'm going to try to keep an eye on the time, but not be too rigid about that. And then we will go through each of the members of the boards and have them ask you a question, and we'll have each of you answer. And so, if you open the question, and she does the second, then with the next question, we'll reverse those. So we'll go back and forth in that regard. Your answers will be two minutes in length. At the end of the time, you'll each get a minute to do a closing statement. We do have to do the vote in front of you in public with a roll call. And I will say now, it's very uncomfortable for us, so, just because one of us does or doesn't vote for you, don't take personally in any way, shape, or form. We often have very good candidates for this, and we have to make a choice. And so, the majority for being selected will be five out of nine votes. So there are five on the Select Board and four on the Housing Authority, and so you'll need five to get that. And we will record those full votes. As far as how we'll go through our questioning and our voting, I believe what we'll do, we'll alternate between Select Board and Housing Authority. I'm going to, question asking, I think I'm going to do in reverse alphabetical order, just for a change of pace, and when we do voting, I'll do in alphabetical order. So we'll go reverse, and so we'll hopscotch back and forth between Select Board and Housing Authority membership as far as asking questions, and then we'll reverse that when we ask for roll call votes. So, any other details? Yes, please.
So, I was simply going to suggest that unlike the last time when we had a whole lot of candidates, we had to time, and we asked the League of Women Voters to come in and help us with that.
Right.
I was going to ask if Mr. Bachman, since he doesn't cast a vote, if he could be our timer for us. And maybe, I don't know, we should have you in the middle or something. But we're not going to wave a big red thing in front of you that says stop.
But just, you know, if he's, it's probably time to wrap it up, I guess is maybe the best way to do that.
We'll do like five seconds.
Right. So.
They got two minutes.
No, yeah.
Two minutes are opening remarks, two minutes to answer questions, and then the closing remarks are a minute each. Any other questions by anybody on either board as far as before we get started, anything procedurally we need to mention before we get going? So, in the very unscientific way, I will pick a number, and one of you will, between one and 10, and the closer of you two to it will go first as far as opening remarks, and that'll start us off. So I've got a number in mind, what number would you pick?
Five.
And what number would you pick?
Seven.
Seven. Seven is closer to the number I picked, which is eight, so you get the pleasure of going first. So, we'll have you give an opening remark for two minutes, and we'll have him. I guess I should introduce you, since I haven't said your names.
Yeah, I know.
And of course, do I have them handy?
Yeah.
But it's, thank you. So it's David Williams and Barbara, Barbara Steinmetz, right? All right, so Ms. Steinmetz, if you would be so kind, just give us your opening remarks.
Okay. I'd like to thank both the boards, the Select Board and the AHA Board, for allowing me to interview for this position. I think the most important thing to me, as far as housing goes, is I'd like to see everything stay up to par, and maybe get some more affordable housing in the Amherst community, and also let me see more programs to get the tenants more aware of handling their finances and handling their nutrition, and doing that the best way they can, and using their money to the best of their ability. I've lived at Anne Whalen for 10 years now, and I've been pretty active in the community. I've also been an officer for the Anne Whalen Tenants Organization. I've overseen picnics that the tenants organization put on, also holiday parties and decorating the building for the holidays, held weekly coffee hours to discuss concerns of the tenants, held an exercise class for tenants. I have volunteered in the office at AHA, which has given me insight into the AHA programs. Sorry, I'm a nervous person here.
That's all right.
Take your time.
Fifteen seconds.
Just to, you know, help out a little.
Last year, I was on the search committee to fill the position as the executive director. I very much enjoyed it, working with three of the board members on that committee.
Thank you. Mr. Williams, if you would be so kind.
First of all, I want to say thanks very much to the Select Board, and also the Housing Authority for making adjustments in your schedule to accommodate an interview with me. I am very thankful for that. And my presence here tonight is a presence of, an indication of my interest of the town of Amherst. I have lived here, my family and I have lived here in Amherst for 21 years. I'm a retired educator, as indicated in my letter. My wife just recently retired from the University of Massachusetts. I have one son who graduated from Amherst High School. And I believe that I have the skills and maybe understanding of some of the major issues that we are confronted with as a country, society, not only in Amherst, with affordable housing. Affordable housing is a challenge nationwide, and it's an issue that I feel that needs additional attention to address the broader issue of affordable housing. I've had experiences in housing, not on the side of affordable, but the side of being rejected as an African-American male, young male, right out of college, attempting to secure housing for my family, and had to deal with ups and downs and that, but I survived.
Thank you. So, again, at this point, we'll take questions from each of the members in turn. Each of you will answer. Since you started that, then he'll answer the first question. The responses are two minutes each. As I indicated, I'm just going to go reverse alphabetical order with questions, and then we'll go alphabetical order when we vote, just to make it nice and complex. I'll have Ms. Kruger, from an order of questions standpoint, since she's sitting with the Housing Authority, I'll have you be in that group, which makes you alphabetically last, interestingly enough. So.
I can go with it.
But that means that the first question is Mr. Walts to ask.
Okay, good. Thank you both for coming here and for your interest. You know, I think we're very fortunate here in Amherst to have civically active citizens who are concerned about social issues and social injustice, and good policy, and people being involved in government, so that there are probably lots of people who would like to do this. You two came forward. Can you tell me what makes your contribution distinctive? That is, what can you bring to this task that almost no one else can?
Well, I will bring to the board, I think, number one, a listening ear, to find out more about the challenges that we are confronted with here in the town of Amherst. I think that I have, will bring also skills, having worked with a number of nonprofits throughout my professional career, the boards that I have served on, and having to deal with some of the issues that we are confronted with, with the Housing Authority, and providing affordable housing for low-income disadvantaged individuals. I have worked in that arena and have a, I think, a pretty good handle on understanding the challenges that individuals have when they are confronted with issues of this nature. I have the experience of working with city officials as we have addressed issues of housing in several occasions, whether it was for affordable housing or housing for students. I have worked with that, and understand some of the process. I don't understand all of it, but I understand some of it.
Thank you. Steinmetz.
I think one of the important things to set up a tenant, and it gives me a good handle on what goes on as far as living in the affordable housing. I also worked in the office as a volunteer, and have a pretty good handle on how things are handed down and sided in the office. I think it's really, really important that we put more programs available to people, and I would be willing to do this, to help them financially and with other issues, to make their communities better.
Okay. Thank you. So, make a note here, sorry. So our next question will come from Ms. Kruger, and you will answer first, so. Just get the question, please.
I've written it down, so it's not checking my mail, but reading my question. Sometimes a tenant or an applicant for tenancy comes before the Amherst Housing Authority Board of Commissioners and wants the board to remedy their issue. Sometimes they're angry and upset, or bring a lot of emotion to the issue, and that might be understandable. How would you handle an occurrence like the one I'm describing?
First of all.
Oh, we're alternating, right?
Yep.
Sure.
First of all, I think we should make sure that it's the proper tenant that's getting upset about things, because tenants have to stand up for their own rights. They can't expect other people to do it for them, and very often, other people want to do it for them. And it ties everybody's hands. So I think that needs to be discussed, and people need to be made aware of that. And the best thing you can do is to try to let them calm down, and if they don't do that, say you're going to have to wait and talk about it in another meeting when things are better. And in most situations that I've seen, it's really a case of the wrong person speaking about the wrong situation. So that needs to be clarified, and we have to be careful with what we say to tenants, too. We can't be too flippant with them, because that just irritates them more and gets them more riled up. And sometimes they can't see why there are certain rules and regulations that everyone has to follow in order to keep things orderly. And I think that's the important thing to point out to them, that they need to understand that, and we need to calm them down, and just slow the whole situation down.
Great. Thank you. Ms. Kruger.
I think, for me, number one, if the person is coming in angry, upset, try to encourage them to settle down. Yes, I will listen to you, but you need to calm down and present your situation to me, so, or to the board, so that we get a clear understanding of what it is, what your challenges are, whatever is going on. And I think communication is key. Being able to listen to one, even when they're angry, you need to be sure that you are listening, paying attention to what is being said, because there may be another message in the conversation that you need to hear, that you may need to address, that the individual may be overlooking, or really not bringing to you the issue that he or she should bring to you. So, listening and communication.
Thank you. Check off my list here. All right. Next up is Mr. Steinberg.
Well, thank you very much, both of you, for being here and for your interest in our Housing Authority, serving on the board. Serving on any board, there's, it's important that you work together effectively as a group, but it's also important that each of you bring your own experiences and your own wisdom to the board. So, many times you will agree, but there are times you may disagree. And so what I'm going to ask you about is whether you have had any experience working on a board or in some similar activity in the community, here or elsewhere, where there has been disagreement within a group that you work together on a usual basis, and how you contributed to helping achieve a unified result and achieving peace in the group.
So you're going to start this one.
Okay, thanks. Well, disagreeing, agreeing and disagreement is a part of the process. As we move forward, that everyone's not going to agree and support what is going on, and in fact, I would even begin to question if everything that is presented to me or to the board, we all agree 100 percent. I am looking for individuals to think about what you're saying, what you're doing, looking at the broader issues, how will this affect what we are doing, how will it affect others who may not even be involved? And it's all right to disagree, but we need to have that understanding, that we are a board. We have major decisions to make. We are making decisions about one's life or livelihood. So we need to look at the broad picture, and we can agree to disagree and keep moving, if it's in the best interest of what, whatever challenges are that have been brought to us.
Thank you. Steinmetz.
Yes, I think that probably with any board that's worth its weight, they aren't, they're going to be able to come to some kind of a decision which might lend to both sides. I don't quite know how to answer that, I'm sorry.
So, let's see, then what's Steinberg? So next up is Mr. Jefferson with his question.
Who am I asking first?
Ms. Steinmetz will be first.
Okay. My question to you is, how are you going to deal with the tenants in the building that are going to come deal with problems that relate to the Housing Authority? Have you thought about that?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. I would lean them towards coming to meetings, board meetings, and discussing what their problems are, and take it from there. I can't solve their problems alone. I don't intend to.
So, Mr. Williams, if you would address that question as well, as far as.
Same.
Right.
Well, the question, if I understand the question, would be somewhat difficult for me, because if I heard the question correctly, how are you going to deal with the tenant in the building when they come if you are on the board and you are living in the same That, I personally think it would be a challenge, because the tenants will be expecting you to go beyond your role as a board member to be sure that everything is A-OK for them. So I see it, from where I sit, I see it as a challenge now.
So next up is my question. So I will, so it'll be first to you and to Ms. Steinmetz. I'll sort of build on that as well. So separate from, you know, particular tenant questions that come before you, are there any particular things that, any particular, either actions, programming, et cetera, that you think the Housing Authority should be taking on as part of their role and responsibility, as far as a next step? A thing that you haven't seen them doing that you think they should be doing?
Really, I don't think I can give a good answer to that, because I, although I have observed some of the activities that have been taking place here in the town of Amherst, I have not been that involved. I saw something in the newspaper maybe a month ago that really was, a red flag came up for me involving the Housing Authority when I read an article about someone who had built apartments here in the city, and there were supposed to be X number of apartments available for affordable housing, but somehow or another, they were rented out, and the owner was now trying to ask people to move out of there. I, I just, I saw that, and I read it twice. I said, how does this happen? Something is wrong somewhere.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Steinmetz.
Could you just tell me the question one more time?
So, are there particular things you think the board should be doing that isn't currently? So either a programming that you think they should be doing, or things they should be looking into, or next steps they should be taking on things they've already taken up? Anything of that sorts? Or what, what do you see as a direction or a new idea that they might want to take up as a topic to wrestle with?
I think there should be more education of tenants, and that includes Section 8, that includes other state-funded groups. Anne Whalen is, gets a lot of programs, because we're right there, the office is right there, and everything happens right there. But all the people that are at the other sites don't tend to get what we get, and I think it's important that they do get that. I think this presidential apartments thing was not a problem of the Housing Authority, and it shouldn't be held accountable for.
So next is Mr. Burkhart.
Boards like this can easily just go through the motions of the regular transactional business that has to happen, and spend plenty of time just getting that done. It's a task in itself. In your experience, to what extent have you seen boards or groups of people go beyond just that and be able to really move an organization in a new direction? And I ask that because we're in a time of real budget restraints, there's a lot of need out there. We have a lot of things that demand attention, just keeping the ship afloat. But if we're to go in a new direction or bring something additional, we're going to have to pull that off. What in your experience tells you how boards or groups of people can do that? I guess I'm addressing you first.
He gave it for his.
Oh, boy. That's a good one. There are some funds available for certain programs, and it's not a lot of money, but there's some there, and I think it should use the advantage of the tenants. As far as going forward and getting more housing and that kind of issue, I guess everything is pretty tight right now, and there really isn't a whole lot that people can do. But I do think that if we made the effort, things can be done pretty inexpensively, and it can be very helpful to the tenants.
I think that the issue that you're raising, though beyond the Housing Authority, you have a town issue that must be addressed from the leisure, from the top down. If you're going to bring about change, if the town of Amherst decides that affordable housing is an issue that. housing is an issue that we need to address or give more attention to, then the town need to get behind or get in front and lead to be sure that the select board and also Housing Authority have the support and work with us to get this done. We are, the town of Amherst is going through a transformation, I would say. When you look at what has happened in Amherst in the last 10 years in terms of housing, look at what is happening downtown. I live over the North End. You look at the condominiums and apartments that we are that's being discussed to be built there. When you look over by Domino's Pizza, the apartments that, I don't know whether they're still in Amherst or haven't, but they're building okay because it says apartment lot isn't happening, apartments will be in Amherst. Those are areas, if we're looking at building the city, this is a university town, housing will always be a challenge because you have college students, 20, 25,000 college students here, but we also need to remember we have a town that we need to address. When those students go home in the summer, when we're here and some folks, or they're gone. But we'd love to see them come back in September because of the economy and everything. So we have to decide, the city, the town, have to decide how we're going to move forward and not just say, wow, when we get to that, no, can't do that.
This Brewer.
Oh, thanks.
And it'll be Mr. Williams to answer first.
So assuming you've attended at least one regular posted meeting of the Amherst Housing Authority Board of Commissioners, so you've seen them in action. I know you can't watch them on TV, like you can a lot of other things. I'd like to get a sense of if you've done that, some reflections you have on that, in particular, having seen that or not, as the case may be, how you view the board's role? I know there was a lengthy description provided online before you guys applied about things the board does, but perhaps a little reflecting, and I was really glad Mr. Burkhard asked this, there are just things that have to be done. There's paperwork that has to be signed, there are agreements that you have to understand and that, you know, you have to understand the rules behind so that you can agree that those rules have been met. But beyond the paperwork issues, how do you view the Amherst Housing Authority, not the housing authority, the employees, but the board's role in terms of interacting with employees and interacting with tenants and also interacting with the larger community? Where does the board fit into doing all of that? Or is their job to just sit there and sign off so that bills can get paid and agreements made? How do you how do you envision that happening based both in your own head and what you saw when you watched the meetings?
Yes, well, you're talking about a board versus the client that you you're working with. And the board is to be here to provide leadership and support. And I would expect in this case, as we move forward, the board needs to decide for itself as a board, the goals of the board, and in setting the goals for the board, that we need to be set jointly with whatever organizations are within the the various tenants or organizations that we have to be sure that we are, I would say that the agenda is not our agenda. We are carrying forth an agenda for those individuals who are living in the housing that the city, state, I'm sorry about that, town, state or or government-owned housing. We need to be sure that we are working for, if you want to say, our clients, because they are the clients and they are expecting us to see that everything moves forward. And as a board, we need to be sure that the attention is given to that, the planning is given to that, the understanding of the needs and concerns of the individuals who live in the housing. I look at in reading the annual report for March, you know, March last year's annual report, I was surprised to see that the waiting lists of the number of individuals who are waiting for housing, the years that they've been waiting on housing, and the question someone need to be asking is why? Why such a large number? What are we doing as a town to reduce that number? I don't know whether the numbers have reduced each year, but it doesn't look that way just reading the March, the 2016 report that was done in March.
Mr. Steinberg.
I really think that one of the important things that needs to be brought to the front here is the amount of housing that's needed. The the lists of people that need to be in housing are horrendously long and I see it could become even more of a problem now that we're sanctuary. Also, it seems like the board gets through the the regular stuff they do every month and there isn't that much time for the tenants or for talking about new programs. And I think that that should be taken into consideration. Everybody wants to stay at meetings longer and longer and longer, but I I do think that that's an important thing. And sometimes there's there's nothing that the board itself can do because the tenants are just out of control and you have to let go of that. That's the only way you're going to get by it. People just, even people with nothing think they're entitled. So it can be a situation where you you can't really calm it down. You just have to let go of it. But the the important thing is that we have more housing and we have more programs.
Great. Thank you. So next up is is Boulet.
Thank you. Kind of, sort of touched on some of the issues with with the question. So I'm looking for just a little bit more detail, not much. So my question, and starting with Mr. Williams, I believe, correct?
Actually, it's her turn to go first.
Starting with, oh, okay, apology. Okay. What are some issues in or with affordable housing that you see? And how would you suggest approaching them?
Issues that I see with affordable housing. I think a really important thing that people don't understand and really it should be brought to the forefront is that there is a certain process that you go through to get into housing. People will say, oh, I've been waiting for housing for so-and-so and so long, and so-and-so just filled out an application and they got through. Well, that's not the case usually. I mean, I've never seen that happen and only if it's an emergency would it happen. I I think that's one of the biggies that we need, we need to let the tenants know that there are definitely certain paths we have to put down to get certain things accomplished. And it's the same for everyone.
All right. Mr. Williams.
If I heard the statement correctly, it's process. Well, whatever whatever the policies and procedures are, that's what we need to follow. The policies and procedures are not set for this group of people or that group of people. This is the way we operate and we are expecting everyone to follow the procedures and the Housing Authority, if it's our responsibility, the Housing Authority's responsibility, to see that that happened. This is, we have to treat people fairly and people need to understand it. And we need to be able to explain to someone why something happened the way that it happened and it didn't happen because, oh, I happen to have known David Williams, so I'm in. It's not about that.
So we've each gotten to ask our question. So each of you will get an opportunity for a one-minute closing remark. Now I'm trying to look, I think I'll start first, I believe.
Let's start us first.
That's right. So Mr. Williams will come up nice and even. So you'll get one minute for closing remark and she will get one minute for closing remark. So if you'd like to to sort of sum up, if you would, please.
Well, in my remarks, I would say to you that as I have outlined in my letter of application, I believe that I will bring to this position experience in working with, I was in nonprofits, I'll just put it that way. I haven't worked in city government, so town government, I'm not going to say that. But working in 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 nonprofits where you're having to deal with some of the issues that are confronted by the Housing Authority, when you think in terms of United Way, when you think in terms of the Urban League and those organizations that I have been involved with and have been involved with them for the last 40 years, everywhere that I have lived, I have decided that I need to give back to the community. I have been blessed as an individual to be able to move up the ladder because I didn't start at the top of the ladder, I started down there. And I was able to, through my education, and I'm willing to give back to citizens of the town of Amherst and work to bring about a change and be sure that the Amherst Housing Authority is second to none.
Thank you. Mr. Steinberg.
Thank you for your time and consideration. I assure you that if I am given the opportunity to work on the AHA board, I will do my best to bring tenants and board members together, working for the betterment of the Amherst Housing Authority.
Thank you. So at this point, we've, we are at a point for a vote, but is there any discussion or questions that we have for each other as as the group of folks that have to make a decision? Does anyone need or want to have any other discussion before we take the vote? I'm not seeing any hands. So in that regard, we will just take our votes. I will do the reverse order of the way we asked the questions. And so I'm just seeking your vote and you just clearly state your name and your vote. I'll record that and then we'll we'll...
Maybe this is a question I should have asked before you.
Okay.
Do we get to articulate our thinking when we vote or is that something we should have some time to do first or do we just vote?
Well, yes.
Our typical process is we do not do that. We have, however, having announced that, then had situations where individual people making votes have gone ahead and given their thinking. So it is entirely optional, but we do not have a point of time for deliberation amongst each other if that was being requested. But if you want to make a statement or just a vote, there is no way of preventing people from doing whatever.
Yeah, right. We're not going to come over and cover you up, you know, not let you speak.
Make you stop talking.
No, we'll, we hope that it's not, you know, if you need to make a statement, you know, let's, I would hope that it's not 45 minutes in length, that would be, you know, my request. But but nonetheless, I'm personally seeking sort of votes, but if you need to sort of explain yourself, that's perfectly fine. Again, I will remind the candidates, it's really uncomfortable for us to have to do this in front of you again. We appreciate both of you for putting yourselves forward for this and during this process out in public and and again, you know, the the nature of the voting is is there's no grayscale here, it's we did or we didn't. And so that's not a statement about your capability, skill or willingness, and we appreciate all of those things that you bring to this process for us. So again, I'm going to sort of reverse the order we asked the questions, so I'm going to say you get to ask, you get to vote first.
Who does?
She does. And then we'll go back and forth between the groups.
One question, are we just saying which which were in favor for or...
Yeah.
Excuse me, we go down for one and then you go down for the other?
No, we'll we'll just announce the person that you think that you would vote for.
Okay. So basically, Boulet, my vote would be for Mr. Williams.
Okay. And so next will be Brewer.
Before I vote, I also want to make another clarifying statement, and as some of you might have noticed, I've been updating our sheet as we go along as to things we should have included up here in terms of what we're doing. Because we've been doing it long enough that you'd think more of the things would be written down, is that when we vote, as we talked about at the very beginning, in terms of the majority, there were some people at one time when we did this who assumed that we would stop voting once we got to the certain number and not everyone would cast a vote. That's not true. So please don't feel, no one should feel pressured about that. So my vote is cast for Mr. Williams.
And now Mr. Burkhard.
My vote's for Mr. Williams.
And my vote, because I'm next, is also for Mr. Williams. And now it's Mr. Jefferson.
Mr. Williams.
And Mr. Steinberg.
I'm going to vote for Ms. Steinberg.
And Ms. Kruger, you get the luxury of two votes.
So I just, I do want to, I'm going to preface in my vote with, I feel torn because I see some differences, this often happens, strengths strengths with each candidate. I've long hoped for a tenant on the Housing Authority Board. On the other hand, a strong voice and helping move the organization and the board forward with with certain skills. So I am torn and I'm only, I'm going to take one vote as a member of the Housing Authority and I'm going to, and I am torn, I'm going to vote for Mr. Williams. And for my second vote, because I'm very uncomfortable with two votes and it's kind of a fluke, I'm going to abstain. So I don't know how we record that, but it's a vote and then it's a vote is an abstention so that I don't double count.
All right. So next is Mr. Wall.
Mr. Williams.
All right. So at this point, we have seven votes for Mr. Williams, which is above the five of nine necessary for the election to the open seat on the on the Housing Authority. And so at this point, I believe I need to make a sort of formal motion, if I can find the right text on my sheet here. All right. Oh, that's not it at all, that's good, it's me. I move by majority five, roll call vote, of which I just took, to select David W. Williams, a registered voter of the town of Amherst, to perform the duties of a member of the Amherst Housing Authority until the next annual election scheduled for March 28, 2018. Yes?
Before anyone or it needs to be fixed. So it needs to say majority, I I appreciate that was a cheat sheet for us, but it needs to say that seven votes were cast and then we can record who did what.
Actually, eight votes for cast.
Yeah, it should not say five, it was just, that was just to help us out.
Oh, that was held over?
That was to help us understand what we were doing.
What we're looking for.
That we confused ourselves. So move by majority, roll call vote of eight to select. And then the date's wrong. It's March 27, 2018.
Thank you for...
It's easy to mix those two up.
Right. So the 27th is actually the election day, I guess, is what that is, right? So is there a second for that slightly amended?
Now I'll second it.
Okay. So now we have a motion and a second. We'll just take a voice vote at this point, because the roll call vote has taken effect. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, so that's unanimous of the motion. But the motion is also recording the actual roll call vote, which we took just a moment ago. And I believe that concludes this small portion of our meeting. And I thank you both again very, very much for coming and putting yourselves out in front of us and letting us go through this process. And I hope that you both are engaged with the Housing Authority, both in the short term and in the long term, and continue to advocate for affordable housing and the tenants who live in that affordable housing for the community. Thank you very much.
Mr. Slaughter, before the Housing Authority adjourns, I'd just like to say, I think the mechanics of this is the selected member will notify the town clerk, and there's a notice and a swearing-in process.
Right. Associate, well, actually, Mr. Bachmann will have the couple make sure.
You'll be notified. And I just want to say that there are other opportunities to be involved with the Housing Authority and the board, and there's often openings. And I would want to encourage, in this case, Ms. Steinberg, to please stay involved with the board, and that I think you'll bring great value, and there will be opportunities for you to participate. Thank you.
And just a further advertisement about mechanics. So Mr. Bachmann will tell them the couple, and then you'll get, you'll be able to get sworn in with the clerk, as Ms. Kruger indicated, so that you can go to your first meeting and have it count. The, of course, there's some material you need to read ahead of time before you do that. The other issue is that with the election coming up, nomination papers will be available in a couple weeks for that. And so for that next seat, and so for everyone watching at home, it'll be fifty signatures required because it's a townwide election. And there'll be a due date that's usually early in February in terms of when that's due. And so, but it'll be a one-year seat that's then on the ballot. And no other Housing Authority Commissioner's seats are up on that ballot in the coming spring.
If I could just ask really quickly, since Ms. Turgeon is here, Executive Director of the Amherst Housing Authority, perhaps you'd get together with a selected board member, just next meeting date and some of the materials, so that you have this opportunity. And with that, I entertain a motion to adjourn for the Amherst Housing Authority?
So moved.
You second?
Second.
Okay. And all those, they both did, so pick your second. And you couldn't see behind you.
Yeah.
I understand that issue. So all those in favor of adjourning for the Amherst Housing Authority?
Aye.
Unanimous four? Okay.
Six thirty-one, if you're recording the time?
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you all very much for coming and accommodating our schedule. So appreciate that.
You bet.
Thank you.
On to tell me.
What's that, I'm sorry?
Isn't that fun?
Yes.
That's a great idea.
A short recess, and her thoughts as a part.
It's tough.
Need that one?
We did that one the other day. Okay.
And so, all we do is, okay. Okay. This logistical, and... Who signed it? Just you?
No, I think all of us are signing.
They put it for all of us, and for the towns.
Right. Everybody signs.
All right.
That's also the other thing. There's lots of trouble with Spencer's situation.
I like that. No contract.
It is, exactly. That's, I'm interested.
Yeah, we're still on camera.
Nice to meet you. And we're working together.
Thank you. Thank you for doing this.
Congratulations. You guys are a tough group, I had a really hard time.
Yes. As miserable as it always is.
He even pulled them up on his computer for me, because I had to read them off there.
Oh, I'm sure.
I thought I could just read them on my phone, and my phone would bring one up. It turns out my phone was bringing the other one up.
Oh, yeah.
But I just choked because it was the first one. I was like, Jim, Jim, help me, help me.
Are you ready?
I am.
We're going to see if the rest of the board's ready. Everybody else, ready? All right, so we'll reconvene ourselves now after that brief recess. I believe all we have is one, well, there are two other items technically on our agenda. I don't think that there are any logistical issues related to tonight's meeting. So I think that one will be dispensed with unless...
Nope, there is one.
Well, you do have.
Well, Mr. Steinberg might.
And the other is that, I mean, we saw the housekeeping part of things in terms of the school committee moving articles too. So that feels like everything's scheduled for tonight.
Right.
But it's not. Is that, I'm spacing out. Okay. So we did not know, but we, some of us have since heard in the community, perhaps, at least I have, that there may be a motion to refer Article 13, which is the first article that's up, back to the town meeting coordinating committee. And I didn't know if we felt the need to take a position on that or not. I know sometimes, I mean, first of all, it hasn't happened yet. But secondly, we, that's one of the reasons we put this on our agenda, so we can, if we want to. Sometimes we have strong feelings about referrals, sometimes we don't. If we wanted to, it seems like I should mention it.
Now's the time?
Yeah.
Well...
I think a motion that would allow us to take a position would be in order.
Okay. So if someone were to make such a motion, we could do that and consider, you know, whether or not we want to take a position on the referral if it comes up.
So to be clear, we would not recommend, at this point, the motion is not likely to be, that we would recommend a referral, but instead that if the motion, yes.
If it were offered.
So something like that. If Mr. Bachmann wants to write that down, yes. I move that if Article 14 were to be, you said 13? Thank you so much. I'm pointing at this 14 that I crossed off.
Right.
If Article 13, if someone makes the motion, not the select board, to refer Article 13 to the town meeting coordinating committee, then the select board should recommend the town meeting that they agree with that referral, whatever the proper wording is.
Recommend referral.
It's just that I hate to say recommend referral because that makes it seem like we're referring it, and we're not.
No, we're not.
Supports, supports a recommendation of referral. But will not make said motion.
But I don't think "will not make" has to be in our motion.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
I don't care.
So there is a second.
Pick your second. And I think Andy and I said it the same.
So is there further discussion? Does anyone else want to elaborate? Mr. Wall?
As Ms. Kruger said, I have two minds about this, but for different reasons. I guess I'm stumbling over the logic. We decided it was a bad idea, so we're going to send it back to people who came up with a bad idea and tell them to make it better when they're with their bad idea. So I don't really see the purpose of this, as opposed to writing it down.
Could the idea be improved?
No.
Okay. I guess that's...
Then that would be a reason to vote, I guess, supporting referral.
That would be a reason.
Right.
Right, and that's why sometimes we do have strong feelings about this sort of thing.
Mm-hmm.
Particularly if the motion's to refer it to us and we don't want it. So that's a different kind of thing.
That's also a factor.
Exactly.
Is there further discussion of the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, you say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There's one. So it's a four to one vote.
That way, if it comes up, we don't have to say, we don't know, because we didn't consider that. We can say, ha, we thought of that.
All right. So are there any other sort of things regarding this evening? I do know, just to comment on order of events, the Articles 10 and 11 will be suggested to be moved to time certain this evening as well.
Directly after 15, as I collect.
Yeah.
Because 16 is going to be moved before 15.
Right.
Just, again, to remind people that I will not be here if we should go to Monday, the 13th. And I think the only article I was responsible for was the final one, which is about the final end of life.
Right.
And it was just to say what are, that we were taking no positions. So if somebody else would be prepared to do that, so you're not scrambling.
I will be.
If you do go to Monday night.
If it ends up being on Monday night, then I won't be happy to take that.
Okay, just, if it, what about tomorrow? I forget, I'm sorry, what did you say?
I won't be here tomorrow.
Okay, so either...
This is, yeah, after tonight, I'm not.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other?
I won't be here tomorrow, but town meeting is not going to happen at all over Thursday night, so I'll cross that bridge before I come to it.
Right.
All right. Here's one other thing.
Yes.
There is a school article about the regionalization. And somebody had mentioned that they might want to put the Town of Pelham as being the concurring district. I talked with town council about that, whether that's, the superintendent's idea was, thought was that that's up to the committee to decide, not town meeting to decide, the concurring district. Town council felt that it was, A, within scope of the article, to include Town of Pelham. And he didn't think that it would, since all the supporting material was referring to Town of Pelham. He didn't think it would harm the article. But it could wind up being a Department of Education decision.
Aye. I understood what you meant, but I think what you just said was that town council said it was okay to do that motion. It was in Fed Moderator who said it was okay.
No, I talked to town council.
And they said it was okay too?
Yes.
They just didn't think it was particularly good idea.
Correct.
Because it could be up to the board that. Because the way these are traditionally written is this weird loose way. And then all the different towns have all their different committees. And then they vote whether or not to come together. We've done this before several times. And it doesn't mean that they have to agree. If the town comes up, if Agawam comes up and says, we have one of these, will you do this with us? We can say, no. But, so limiting it upfront. So you're letting us know that it is legal to do such a thing. So that's one thing that'll happen. Does that mean we should have, if, if that comes up, then I would argue that we should have a position that we think that's a bad idea. So I would not want the select board to support doing that because it falls outside the way this process is supposed to work. And you're not supposed to limit who one committee can talk to another committee. That's not the way it works. So if we really, again, if that's like Article 13 just was, then it seems like a motion to not support the limitation for Article, is it Article 10, on Chigis Pelham.
So moved. Do you like the second?
Yeah.
You're the second.
Yeah, I think that there's another question that I...
Okay, so we have a motion in a sec, so now we can talk about it.
Right.
Okay.
So Mr. Steinberg.
This is all in the same line. I'm not entirely sure, but I thought that the statute that sets up the process for regionalization was specific on the wording of the motion that had to be offered.
I thought so too. Last time we did it.
That's why I'm concerned about this. And I can't now, in the next one minute, look up the statute.
Right, and town council did a quick read. And I just talked to him like ten minutes before the meeting started. And it was verbal conversation. He did not do research on it, but he felt it would not necessarily harm the motion. He recommended that you stay with the original language as offered.
Without having done the research, I think on principle, I would be able to take a position against doing so.
Right. I mean, if we, if we vote on this, and we're going to...
In the email, or is it?
No, you don't want to be a computer.
Yeah, the result is a vote that we suggest no, recommend no, and that I'll do my best if I can get access to the internet.
We're asking Mr. Wall to see if he can do it. It's National law chapter 71, Sections 14, 14A and 14B. We just remember being told, last time we did this, at a special town meeting in, what, 20, whatever.
Well, I've read the statutes many times. Probably not have been writing recently.
Yeah, it's 71, Sections 14, 14A and 14B.
So if I understand correctly, the motion is to not recommend the amendment. It would be an amendment to the motion. It would be, so we would take a vote on the amendment, and we would recommend against that amendment.
I thought the correspondence went right. I thought the correspondence was superfluous anyway. But that was something in the email today.
So do we want to discuss it further? Or do we want to take a vote on our position relative to an amendment to the motion? Not our motion, the motion of town. Don't have to get confused here with all the motions and amendments and whatnot.
Potential amendment that might be made tonight.
Password again?
The crazy password for this, this is asking for a password to get it. Oh, wait, I'm connected, now I'm connected, it should be okay.
Okay.
It should have been stored there, sorry.
Yeah.
Or do we think we need to take a moment and let Mr. Wall do a little internet surfing?
I mean, I really, I don't like disagreeing with town council on camera, but I remember the way Mr. Steinberg does. That when we brought it before town meeting before, it was like, this is the language, and this is what you get, and that's the only thing you're allowed to say.
Okay. Well, that might also help the moderator, if that's known before the meeting, because he might not allow a motion if it's not legal, but... So is there, so we do have a motion on the floor. And so do we, should we do a little research? Because if...
Should we postpone voting for a minute and take up this other?
Well, that's what I was thinking.
Want to do the other thing while we're frantically trying our devices?
All right, so why don't we do that? I was going to suggest that. So we're all thinking of the same thing. So while folks seek internet confirmation of our collective recollections, Mr. Bachmann, there was another item on our agenda around the Affordable Housing Tax Incentive Agreement.
Right. So if you vote, and in February, you voted the Tax Incentive Agreement for the Beacon Communities Development called North, North Amherst. Based on that...
North Square at the Mill District.
North Square at the Mill District, thank you. Based on that vote and the content of your vote, town council has developed an actual document that would be signed between the town, the tax incentive between the town and Beacon Communities, the group that's doing this. So that is on your desk today. I sent it to you earlier, it's been posted. There are signature line items for the select board, for the town manager, and for town council, and for representatives from Beacon, the president of Beacon.
Okay.
Well, it was in our packet from last week.
Right, but I think it was modified once more since we last...
Just to add the signature line item for town council.
Right, so the content was not changed.
Not a word.
It was just the signature page changed a little bit.
We may have the wrong dossier tonight, but it doesn't matter.
So that was the main thing, that the signature page changed, but otherwise the rest is the same. It is in our sign folder, we do need to sign that this evening. Any success on internet searching?
But, Mr. Slaughter, we don't need to vote, because we already have.
Correct.
It's just a document.
Must be in the regs somewhere.
Right, so we could start...
Must be in the regs.
So it would be...
It's not in Mass General Laws in the regs.
Okay.
It's there at all.
Or we're just parroting what we thought we knew.
Maybe all the kids now that have shut, I think we're still, the question is whether we think it's a good idea.
Yeah, on principle.
So we do have the motion. Are we ready to take a vote?
I think so.
I'm not seeing any objection to that, so...
Okay, let's do it.
I will, I'll say, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So that's unanimous, five to zero, to not recommend that amendment to the motion if it's made relative to that article. So I believe that concludes our agenda for this evening.
The only other thing I was going to bring up, Mr. Slaughter, real quickly, is that I have here an outline of points to make about the Zero Energy Proposal that's going to come before town meeting tonight. And I could offer to hand it around, it's not normally something we do, but it is available for anybody who wants to comment on that. Because I thought we were agreeing with the goal, because who wouldn't agree with the goal of zero net energy if, you know, we're for all sorts of nice things? Our point was that, given the practical realities of the planning process, finance, and also through other factors, we didn't think it was realistic to impose that goal upon the town. So I thought we were saying we'd be happy to work with the petitioners to find a way to reach that, you know, to move toward that goal at some point, but not tie us to a deadline or a particular process. So maybe it's a semantic difference, but, you know, so it's could be that we worked petitioners to craft a new resolution for the spring that we could both agree on, or I don't know. So I didn't see a contradiction between what we said and what Mr. Steinberg said, but it might be just me.
Well, I think the way you phrased it, Mr. Wall, is maybe it does a better job of cutting the baby in half.
Your beggars flying around.
Is that important? Do you understand it?
I'll work on the language.
Sure.
You'll have some time, I think.
I think so.
A little bit.
A little bit.
So barring any other topics relative to tonight, I believe our agenda is complete, and so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And we're adjourned at 6:50. Thank you all very much. Thank you, Amherst Media. And now we have our --